None here. Ochsner.
Here.
Shalke, please. Don, Donovan.
Yes.
Kleinschmidt.
Yes.
Lightline.
Here.
And Domeyer.
Here. Need a motion for declaration of a legal meeting? Second. By Donovan, second by Maloney, that this be declared a legal meeting. Roll call.
You guys need to make sure that goes. Donovan.
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Here. Oh, yes.
Shalke absent. Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
And Domeyer?
Yes.
We need a motion to excuse Janet from the meeting. Move that. Second. By Sean, second by Randy. That the Board excuse Janet Shalke from the June 11 regular meeting discussion. Roll call.
Maloney?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Ochsner?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
None, yes. Domeyer?
Yes. This is the portion of the meeting that we use for public comments. The visitors have a comment to see you. And we'll move on to the reports and administration.
I think all three principals, I usually excuse them in June and July, I think they all have a written report. We did get our statewide assessments in writing back. Jeremy, of course, gifted writer, speaker, has a long report where he's explaining our A3 did fall a little bit in our writing, but they did update the exam and he explains it, I think, pretty well in there. But we'll address really our assessments more in October and November when we get all of our reports in and we do our annual report from this year or so. But they do, I think all three principals talk about them in their reports there. As far as my report, band uniforms, Mr. K. Skinner and I, for the last two years, we've been working on getting new band uniforms. Our band uniforms are 12 years old and need them. When Ben first talked to me two years ago, he estimated the cost between 30 and 35,000. But they have like a 12-year, they're supposed to last 12 years, which is one we've had before. So when you look at it as far as that, that's not bad. Well, you know, don't faint when I tell you, but when we ordered them this year, he ordered them and they actually, the cost was closer to $45,000. Now, the music boosters at one time had told Ben, or at least Ben maybe assumed that they would try to pay half. Well, I don't think they're going to be able to pay half of the 45,000, at least not right now. But they are giving us what money they have and they will raise some money over the next couple of years. And so I had budgeted about 25,000 this year, so, but I think we have enough that we'll be fine. But I just wanted to let you know that cost was a little bit higher than what we anticipated, but the music boosters aren't going to help us out a little bit to do that. So I don't think it's going to be a problem. If they can last us 12 years again, that'd be fantastic, so. Transportation report, I was going to have it this month and then Lynn reminded me she's, you know, she's still paying drivers from May in the May, in the June payroll, so I don't, I'll wait and, I don't know, give you that in July and, you know, the mileage that we put on the new buses and what we paid our drivers total and what we paid for activities and the miles we did on activity routes and I'll have Bob Taylor give us a little report on, we have to do drug and alcohol testing and he takes care of that and that's a random testing, so I'll have that, hold that for you in July. The extra duty assignments were enclosed in your packet and they were on the second backside of the teacher salary proposal that we had. The ones in yellow are the ones that we have worked with the Finance Committee, worked with the FCA on adding some coaching assignments. There's probably a couple of coaching assignments not yet filled on there, but they also were waiting to make sure that the Board ratifies the agreement that we have. I gave you in your packet the memorandum on the complaint filed last year. The Attorney General has now closed that complaint and I, I gave you, I think, a copy of both, the letter to the complainant and his memo to us, so you should have all that. Insurance packets went out. We did advertise it. Jody sent some to the local agents that she knew had been interested prior to that and then we got a couple other calls that we've sent packets out to. And certainly if you know someone that you think might be interested, let us know and we'll, we'll get them a packet. Not everybody reads the, you know, the paper and the bids and things like that, but we gladly do that. We did get a letter this week from the Village of Fairmont, just their public notice showing that they're going for blighted status in particular areas of Fairmont. And I'm not too sharp on what that really means for us, other than the fact that I suppose maybe it takes, takes some valuation down in a blighted area, is that what happens in that?
I think it's so they can get TIP financing.
TIP financing.
Financing that has to be a blighted area. And I think sometimes blighted has a negative connotation, but sometimes it's good as far as that. And I don't know, I don't know what the requirements are needed in blighted area. Do you know?
No, I don't.
Does it have to be a surgery?
Make the state dedicate it.
Yeah. Because I mean, I think they have blighted ethanol plants, because I'm very used to.
So anything, you know, I don't know that it's, they sent us a notice and I guess it's because that we're, receive revenue from that area.
Blighted.
I did, I did send you a third quarter budget report and I'll go through that now if you, if you had that. Our total revenue right now is a little over 6 million. Of course, we get a big, big chunk in the first of June and so that's kind of up to our revenue. And then our total expenditures through the end of May were 5.3 million. We had spent 70% of our budget and being three quarters of the way through the year, that would, that would mean 75% of, if we'd spent more than 75, we would be ahead of spending. So I think we're doing fine because in the summer, of course, we actually spend less. We have less payroll and we have no travel, transportation really with anything. So we're really going to be on track to finish significantly under budget. Maybe the band uniforms will jack us back up a little bit, but I think we'll be, we'll be fine. There was some correspondence we received this month also, and I think it was in your packet, it was mainly thank yous and some things like that.
Who's that?
Carter, it was Jody Carter's mom.
Her mom?
Her mom passed away.
I didn't know that. And Larry Westerberg?
Oh, he thanked, he thanked us. We give, at our end of the year luncheon, we give a 10, a 15, 20-year awards and Larry got a 45-year award from us.
Okay.
45 years is a long time than anyone, we actually had a 45. Larry Westerberg, a 40-year Linda Bridges, and a 35-year Jerry Strattman, which that's pretty amazing.
That's been your power?
35 years, so it was fantastic.
John Wallace.
I don't think Larry's done yet, so we're hoping we can give you, we have to come up with a 50-year award because we don't have one.
There's not a lawn chair.
Lawn chair, maybe.
He wouldn't.
There aren't any questions, that was my report.
We move into the action items. Minutes of the May meeting, need a motion?
One more.
One more. Second. By Martin, second by Jim, let the Board approve the minutes of the May 14 regular Board of Education meeting. Discussion? Roll call.
Lightline?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
And Domeyer?
Yes. Need a motion for financial reports? By Dave. Second. By Jim. Let the Board approve the financial reports as presented. Discussion? Roll call.
Ochsner?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes. Domeyer?
Yes. General fund claims, need a motion?
Certainly.
Two seconded. Randy. By Randy. Board approve the general fund claims in the amount of $114,797.58. Discussion? Roll call.
None, yes. Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Ochsner?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
And Domeyer?
Yes. Building fund claims?
Move.
You got one?
Randy, two.
By who?
And we need a second.
Got a light one?
All set.
Okay. Board approve the building fund claims in the amount of $4,103.80. Discussion? Roll call.
Lightline?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Domeyer?
Qualified capital purpose fund claims, need a motion?
Second.
By Kleinschmidt, second by Donovan, let the Board approve the qualified capital purpose fund claims in the amount of $8,886.25. Discussion? Roll call.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
And Domeyer?
Teacher salary package for two years, need a motion? Second. Is that Jim?
Yes.
It's moved by Dave and seconded by Jim, let the Board approve the 2012, 13, 2013, 14 teacher package as prepared by the Finance Commission. Discussion?
I would like to point out maybe one thing. If you got that in front of you, Randy had called me today and he had a good, a good point on the retirement figure there. If you notice, percent wise on retirement, it's about the sixth item down. It's the highest percent increase, although it's not a, the largest amount of money, it's the highest percent increase. And what happened was the legislature changed two years ago that felt like they weren't funding the retirement well enough and so they've, they raised it last year, they raised it this year. But each of those years, we get that increase, $28,593 back in the following year's state aid. They told us that if we're going to raise it, we're going to make sure that, you know, that you get it back and we do, and we do get it back. They raised what the teachers and administrators put in also. The Board pays 101% of what the teachers put in, so they raised both. And so we do get that, we do get that money back and that, you know, that doesn't show on there, but Randy had a good point and I, I should have brought that up earlier to people, but.
And that was, that's not even going to be, you can't negotiate.
No, there's nothing, nothing we can do about it, so.
That was my big question. That's why I.
And we do get it back and, you know, what little state aid we get, if you sum up my state aid, that's what we get, is that money right there. Once that goes away, we probably won't going to get anything, but unless we raise our levy to 95 cents, which I.
But we've always been getting that, portion of that.
This past two years. It's only, it's only been raised within last year and this year were the two raises. So we got state aid, this year was from the previous year, we should get this money back on next year's state aid. It's always a year in arrears, so. It was, it was a good question, though. And I wanted to make sure I shared it with everybody.
And this is two years, so a year from now, we're not negotiating yet, or we are negotiating?
This is, this year's, this is this year's package.
Eight, two months worth.
This is this year's package and then the base will go up 725 for the second year.
Okay.
The percent increase, of course, we don't know because we don't know what insurance is doing next year and everything like that, so, so we don't know the percent increase for next year, but.
Okay. So we're still going to start negotiating in September either?
Actually, actually you have to notify each other in August that you're ready and then, yeah, the timeline begins.
So this will be this September, it'll be the next.
Eliminate the Finance Committee from having to do this again in August, in September.
This year.
About this year.
Yeah. So then you're, so you'll start negotiating a whole year in advance now instead of, you know, we used to start March, April, May to be ready for September, now you have to start a whole year. Because if you're not settled, if you can't come to agreement by December, then there's a, the state steps in and they have a process you have to go through for, I can't remember what they call it, mediation, where they have a mediation that you have to go through, so. Almost, our conference superintendents met last week and almost everybody has a two-year agreement, except for the few schools that haven't settled yet. But the ones that have settled, they all have a two-year agreement. If there was only one school that had, and it's because of the timeline. You take, you take a risk on that second year. I mean, if health insurance goes up a lot, then, you know, our increase could be high. If health insurance stays pretty low, you know, then, who knows? But if you're going to try to stay comparable within your array, you'll just, you'll just work your way either back or forward the following year after that anyway, so.
So where do we fall in the percentage increase with the rest of the schools in the district?
Well, they're, they're all roughly within, most everybody was between 3 and 4%. I don't, I think there was maybe only one school that got over 4% for the whole package, so. And we all compare the same. We, we use this year's staff for next year because some schools are still hiring, so you can't really count the new people yet really, so we use this year's staff. Even though we're losing three of ours, we counted them as being on there. That's why our actual increase is a lot less because we're replacing three pretty highly salaried teachers that have been here a long time, so. I think our, our actual increase is 1.8% when you take those three out and put the new people in, so. But we've also had, we've had years where we replaced 10 teachers and we had a negative increase, but we've also had years when nobody left and that gets pretty expensive when nobody leaves. So it kind of balances itself out, so.
You're going to have some turnover.
Almost every year.
Almost every year. In our size of school, but it's luxury.
Yeah.
I guess I have a couple of questions. I was trying to enter for guys that negotiate, Dan was not here, but did you talk to anything about health insurance, you know, maybe raising premiums or what did the teaching present to you guys? What was their?
I don't know any mention of health insurance.
I think we talked about health. I think what they had asked for was, it's okay to speak for you guys, $750 on the base for two years. 750 this year and 750 next year. And the Board Finance Committee came back with 700 because we knew the retirement rate was pretty high this year and then when the retirement rate goes away next year, then we sit seven and a quarter, I think, to do that.
I guess my question is, you know, we all know health insurance is going up, you know, and a lot of places are raising, they're keeping the same amount of dollars, but you have to go through a hiring back and forth. And I guess I, that was my question, if that was discussed or thought about at all? You know?
It wasn't, it wasn't discussed.
It wasn't discussed.
It wasn't hired. Okay.
In the past, this has been discussed with the teachers and it's usually they want to keep it going.
Yeah.
Because it's a total, it's a total pack.
Right, right, it's a total pack. But I guess that was my question because, you know, we all know health keeps going up and.
Yeah, that is a good thing.
Any type of business, that's, you know, it's becoming a big expense. Obviously, present is a big expense, too.
Yeah.
Well, let's say it's an issue also of the state, too.
Well, I, you know, Sean and I both know that the state didn't have enough funds or they kind of, but even as a private business, it's the same. I guess that's something to consider. The $700 was, puts a 31.7, where does that put us? Do you say somewhere in the middle of conferences? I guess, I should have asked you that this morning, I didn't read.
You can't really, you can't really tell by just looking at the 31.7 because everybody's, everybody's salary index that they use is a little bit different. And, you know, we're on like a four by four. If you, if you understand the salary index and it's somewhat complicated, it's 4% to move over when you get education and 4% down for each year. Well, some schools use a four by five or a five by four or 5%, so it's hard to compare that base, but what we do, Jody and I, we, we take every school and put it on our, our salary schedule and then we go to the end and we come up with the total dollar figure and we're, we're like third, we're third in our conference of 11 and we pay our teachers in the top, top three. It's been that way. It's been that way in my seven years here. We've been in the top three probably four out of the seven years. The lowest we've been maybe was eighth and then the other two years, we were like fourth and fifth, so. But when I, when I came here, that was just kind of our philosophy, Paul's and the people that were on the board, it's, I think some of them have gone through some, some times when, when, you know, there were some, some hard feelings with negotiations and the court's going to make you stay in the middle no matter what you do.
What a public.
And if you can get into the top three and then, and get there, then if you just do the same thing every year that all the other schools are doing, so you're not doing anything different budget wise, you'll stay in the top three. It's when you, it's when you give a low base one year, then you try to get back up and give a high base the next year, that jumping back and forth makes it tough for me to budget, makes it tough, you know, to manage. But I think our average base increase, I think I wrote it in there, was a little over 800 bucks the last eight or nine years, $800 on the base. And so, you know, we're giving them 700 and seven and a quarter, so it's lower than what we, the average we've done over the last nine, 10 years, but it's still, I think, going to keep us in that, in that ballpark. I think the Finance Committee did a great job. A little back, Randy, to your other question, as I was sitting here, and I was a teacher negotiator head for a long time and I enjoy the numbers racket, you know, I told, like I said, Sean, I can't change oil, but I can do numbers, but. Health insurance, there's a couple ways to look at it. You're going to pay the same dollars to keep your teachers in the middle no matter what, whether it's benefits or whether it's salary. People say, gosh, we hate paying this high health insurance, but, but at least health insurance is a flat number. If, if you're going to lower their health insurance to a lower deductible, you're going to pay them more in salary. And then you're also going to pay more in retirement and you're going to pay more in FICA, which you don't pay that on the health insurance. So, you know, to me, just because you're, you want to, you know, and I know there's a, there's a movement to cut back on health insurance, but to me, you're not going to save any money doing it and in a lot, in a lot of cases, you know, I, I've tried to convince teachers before, wouldn't you rather have that money in your pocket? Wouldn't you rather have that money in salary and have a lesser health insurance? Majority of them wouldn't. And from a Board's perspective, you know, it costs you and it looks, maybe it looks bad to the public, but you give them more in salary and less in health, it costs you in FICA and retirement and, and it costs you a whole lot more than, than just that salary, so. But good questions, good discussion, I appreciate it. I think we do have a motion and a second.
Yeah, we do. Any other questions or discussion?
What was the health insurance increase about, Robert?
The total increase, Greg, was 2.99%. It was pretty low this year compared with what it's been.
Roll call.
Ochsner?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
None, yes. Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Domeyer?
The administrative salary package, need a motion? Second. Moved by Dave and seconded by Jim, let the Board approve the 2012, 2013 administrative package. So this is just for the.
This is just for one year. And the top one is just for one year too, it's just that the base has been set for the next year.
I guess again, you had a question of how did you get to 3.82%?
3.82 is the same as the teaching staff number.
And the difference from last year to this year? Randy?
Last year, there was no.
I know, but I mean, what's changed over this last year?
I don't understand what's changed.
Well, in the sense of, you know, we, we talked about squirting out at one time, splitting it out, so you had principals of one, superintendent of another, was that even discussed, Robert?
No, we looked at it as the team approach, with the teachers and the administrators.
So how does that work? We have a new administrator. We've got a part-time administrator and two full-time. So how is that working? I mean, how are those numbers going to come out? How does that affect them?
Is it a percent change on the base each year? Is that what, I guess that's what you're asking. But, but I guess my question is, do they?
Yeah, is Steve?
Last year, this is great review, but he didn't get a raise.
Well, because she was new.
So, so it's Steve. I think that's what you're asking, that's why.
Yes, Steve's salary was already set for next year when we hired him.
So does he get a raise or he's, he's?
He's on his contract.
He's where, his contract's already signed for next year. We haven't, I haven't and the other two principals haven't signed yet because they don't have a salary set in there, but yes, Steve's is fixed. But it, but it is in that, because it is in the figure.
Okay.
So wouldn't it be much as this, this first year because, just like on the top one with only 1% or something because of the three teachers higher salary, this one won't be 3.22% either because Steve's salary isn't?
No, we figured, we figured it in here. We figured it in here, I think, with the administrators. Because his is already a done deal and we don't, you know, so I think it's already been figured in. Michelle, Michelle is at a 0.75 contract and we only got figured in what Fillmore Central pays Michelle. We don't figure in what ESU pays Michelle. We don't figure that, is that what your question is, as part of?
Yes, that was how.
Yeah.
Or does the ESU then have to kick in a certain part? You talked about that or what, how does that work?
But ours, we just, we have three-fourths of Michelle's contract and we pay Michelle what we're going to pay her for that three-fourths. And then ESU has a quarter contract and they, they're going to pay her what they're going to pay her. What, what Dan and I have agreed to was that they would give her the same percent increase on their share as what we're going to do on our share. That makes it just easy. So it is complicated, but the ESU share is not, not in there, that's just the Fillmore, the Fillmore Central. Last year, actually, what happened last year, again, we had a 0% increase, but we actually had a decrease because what we paid Michelle compared with what we paid Mark Rogge was about $17,000 less, so we actually saved about $17,000 overall in the, in the total thing. So this, I think the Finance Committee, when we visited about it and the principals and I, we, they were interested in locking in the same as the teachers and, you know, I was okay with whatever, with whatever they wanted to do and I, I think we do have great principals and, and I was happy to see that, that they could get that, the same basic increase, so.
My biggest objection, I guess, is when you're talking about 3.82% increase of 90 or 100,000 versus 40,000 is huge. That's a big difference.
Where are we at in the rate for the superintendents and principal? We own the bottom half.
Well, exactly where we're going to get that.
I think I gave it to the Finance Committee, but I think I was like seventh out of the 11th and I think that Jim was like sixth. eleventh. And I think that Jim was like sixth. It's hard, it's hard to compare Michelle because there weren't any three-quarter time contracts in there. But if we projected hers out, I think she was about the middle of the pack. And then impossible to do Steve because there is no other middle schools in, in the conference. So we kind of put them both on the, on the, you know, high school and the elementary just to see, to see where they fall. But we're in the middle of the pack. And I think that's, that's good.
Well, that's what we're trying to keep teachers in the top three. Aren't we trying to keep administrators in the top three or four of the conference?
It's, I, I think it's good to develop a philosophy of what you want to do and then, then not worry about the people and what they're paid. Just kind of go by your philosophy. I mean, maybe your philosophy is we're gonna give the cost of living and another half of a percent every year. I think it's good to do that because there's, you know, you wanna stay out of personality conflicts and just come up with a, with a philosophy and try to do that. I, I think with our teachers, we've always, I've always, I can't speak for all of you, but I've always felt like we keep them in the top half of the conference. That's good. We never have to fall back. We've always got comparative raises. When, we wanna hire somebody, our, our salary benefit package looking good, you know. I've, I've always been content to be Mark at the middle of our conference. And I would be more than content to still be there. Don't have that desire. So I'm, I'm treated well and I'm paid well here, so.
And I like the total team approach where you've got a team of its leaders and the leadership following line with the team. I think we've got great teachers and I think we've got great, uh, good administrators.
And I don't disagree with this. It's more, I come from a different systematic type of view of how you break things out. And it's just a different philosophy.
And the value weighted on different expectations?
Back to your comments, Sherry, and I understand that, too. But we have probably our highest paid teachers that have extra duty make almost as much as our principals. And so if you, if you don't use the same percent, pretty soon they're gonna catch up and, and be ahead of, of our principals. So I, if you don't use that percentages approach, and I realize there's a difference in dollars, but our highest paid teachers are getting close when they have extra duties and take extra duties, being close to, very close to principal pay.
Any further discussion on that? A rule call?
Ochsner?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
Maloli?
No.
None, no. Delmeyer?
Board policy number sixty-five hundred, internet policy. We just need to approve.
Yeah, we went over it last. It was written by the Perry Gessford firm and sent to all of our ESU six schools.
I would move, Jim? Also, second mark. It's been moved by Jim, seconded by Mark. The board approved board policy number sixty-five hundred, internet policy as presented. Discussion?
How does this affect the headlines from the other day in Omaha with, I hate bringing that up, but it's, it's one of the ones that it was not a good thing to see where she didn't even get into the job. So I mean, how do we look at that so that we're actually doing spot checks, I guess, is the best way to put it? Because I mean, I do hear at times that, you know, there's been people on their staff. And I, I don't have anything to base them. So it's like secondhand knowledge to me. But I guess my more question is, you know, I know we've got it in there that we can check when we want to, but do you have something set up to? It's like, I guess where I'm going with it, sort of like in one place I was at, my number got hit three times on UA, you know. And they just did monthly UAs. And I was like, seriously? And this is the third month in a row my number gets hit? You know, but I mean, it's.
Are we doing that?
Yeah. And we didn't, that's, I guess where I'm going with it.
Are you talking students? Are you talking teachers? Or are you talking?
As I say, all the above. I, I think really, you know, and I don't wanna waste a lot of time in it, but it just, for an IT person, it'd be like lucky split for them just to go in and say, okay, are they going surfing outside the, the necessary norms of whatever priors you wanna put on there? And I, and I appreciate, Mark, I wanna hit this real quick. I do appreciate, because I know that our kids have been limited. So I, and I've heard that complaint personally. And I'm like, that's fine. You shouldn't be going, you know, else we're too bad. I don't feel sorry for you, you know, so.
I know we check, I know we check the kids and, and we do random checks. And Jerry Stravon does most of that over at, but I don't, I don't think we have anything in place for our staff unless we have a suspicion. And then we have the ability to, to do that through ESU six. And so we, we haven't had to do it. But I think the, the things are in place that we can do it whenever we want to do it, so.
Well, I like in that it says that there's no association with privacy when you're using that. And I appreciate.
We tell our staff that every call at our introductory meetings that email's not private, so.
I think it's very well-written, very, hits everything.
Further discussion? Rule call?
Donovan?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Maloli?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Delmeyer?
Yes.
Elementary chiller, yeah.
I would move that we accept the bid of Kelsch and help it with the number one.
Try, Jim.
Sixty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, not including high voltage water.
Second that?
It's moved by Jim and seconded by Sean that the board awarded the chiller bid to replace the elementary chiller to Kelsch pump.
Right, something in heat.
Discussion?
Saying this is a original one, so.
They were the only.
Original.
Original.
Oh, original. I think it's an original chiller.
There's three chillers. Two of them were replaced three years ago. And we got, this will be, this will take care of it.
Original chiller.
It's hard to say in one.
Yeah, it was the only one that we got.
The only good.
Discussion? Rule call?
Donovan?
Yes.
Maloli?
Yes.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Delmeyer?
Yes.
Okay, discussion items. Um, the review of the parental involvement policy, did we need sheets for that?
Did you get anything on that, the parental policy?
We should have. Of the policy.
Basically, what Jody, what we have to do by law of the year is just review the policy. If you want any changes to the policy, then next month, we'd actually have an actual hearing so our parents can come in and voice concerns over any changes. But if you wanna keep the policy the same, then all we have to do is just review it and whatever. So it's there for your review. You know, if you, if there's any significant changes that the board wants to take and we did, and we would do that next month, then we'd have the following month then to have a hearing so that people are aware of those changes, so.
We don't have to have a hearing, do you?
No. You have to review the policy. And then you only have to have a hearing is if you're gonna make changes.
Okay. So then can we update where, where it says policy review? It shows that it hasn't been reviewed since I was.
Yeah, we, we review it every year, so. But yeah, we probably should.
Again, my question, do we have any complaints of, or do we need to change it?
Haven't. Absolutely, so.
The next discussion item is the facilities project slash bond.
Think I'll let Mr. Donovan check into some things here. Maybe he can talk.
We talked last time about maybe the building and grounds committee meeting with the city, whatever they call it, buildings and ground over. And I said I'd contact Kyle, which I did. And they, they have a group of three as well. And so we just kind of set up a time. And so we talked about it to another meeting and we kind of got a time to work for us. So I'll contact Kyle. Just kind of, just an open discussion of what everyone's thoughts are maybe of the building down there. And if we can work together to improve it, we, you know, we'll just start those communications. So I'll get back to Kyle and, and, because they will have to advertise it, because they have to advertise it, even though it's, there's three of them, so.
That's still a corner for them.
Oh, yeah, would, yeah, would, yeah.
So you have a meeting.
Somewhere in the future. We've agreed to meet.
Is that, is that because the mayor doesn't know? Is that why?
The last time, we also talked about science groups. Have you, do you have a list of things that need to be done? Or what do we need to do?
No, I, I did talk to Tim Rep, who was the architect and, and, you know, I guess our feeling was we weren't sure how to start on the project because, you know, who's making the recommendations on what needs to be done? We wanna just got everything, put windows in, all new equipment tables. I mean, I think that'd be what our science teachers would want. And so we weren't sure really how to get started on it. And.
Well, just my own personal, if, if we had a facilities committee that said this is what we want and we developed a plan from that, why don't we go to the science teachers? Maybe they come up with pie in the sky. But if it comes back to us anyway, I mean, hopefully there's some, drill a little through it. And what, what do you need? What really needs to be taken care of immediately?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly can do that.
Well, because they will need to know. I mean, they need to know what they're teaching. An architect, how are they gonna know what's taught in a science class or what types of equipment they need?
But it could take a different design of what we currently have.
So then we go back to the architect once we've got that basic information and throw
Another possibility is you could give the staff the opportunity to visit some schools that surround us and see what they have and see what they like. And then they could present those ideas to, to the architectural firm.
Sure.
And then, like you say, they, they will have some, something in the project. We wouldn't be just dropping something in the lab.
We got plenty of time and we're gonna need, we're needing time to build up our building fund if we're gonna do that anyway. And so.
Anything else on the facilities project? Miscellaneous charges scheduled, charges scheduled?
Should be one in your packet. And I have a, well, we currently pay in 2011 and 2012. And then my recommendation for 2012 and 2013 would be the increases of either ones in red, our hot lunch. We've been increasing it about a nickel each year because we, we can't come close to, to breaking even. And we'll just fall further behind if we don't. If a nickel's, if the climate isn't right for it, I would understand if you didn't want that. Substitute teacher, we try to stay competitive. And that's pretty competitive. I don't, two dollars, I'm not sure what the percent increase on that is. This is not very much, so.
Do we actually pass this next meeting?
Yeah, we just discussed it today and you guys decide what you want. Then we would have it as an action item.
As a motion for the next meeting. Any changes we want to make?
Well, as I was asked with the Michelle Obama, you know, is that gonna affect us with our?
With our lunch?
Yeah, because I know it's affecting us out of the facility. We have to.
Price-wise, it doesn't affect us, but it may affect some of the things that we serve.
Yeah, as I say, because I mean, we're talking, I think we were talking like 10,000 bucks a month on, that if you don't hit a certain level of nutrition, so that.
Cindy and I, Cindy and Ben Moldman, who kind of runs the Fairmont site, they went to a meeting two weeks ago on that. And then Cindy and I are sitting down this week to do our evaluation. And we're going over, we're going over the changes we may have to make. So I'll try to update you, Sean, that, that I think, I think it's, I think we're gonna be fine.
Ah, that's fine with me on that. I just, still.
It's how much the food's gonna cost us, yeah.
Yeah. We're still walking away smiling, you know, like as parents. Because I can't feed my kids at home for two eighty-five a meal. I'm just gonna run down.
Any other comments on the schedule? Board policy review forty-two hundred through forty-three fifteen.
Turn in your checklist. We're, we're now done with the four thousand section. But what we'll do, what we'll do next month, then of course, it will go over anything in the four thousands, which we did the last three meetings. We'll go over anything that got checked. So we'll still be in the four thousands, but we'll be reviewing any policy that anyone checked off on the list and go from there, so. Thank you.
And the next meeting is scheduled for the sixteenth of July, June eleventh.
Right. And that's the third Monday instead of the second Monday.
So need a motion for a turn? Second, Mark?
Jim?
Jim? Rule call?
Lightline?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Maloli?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Delmeyer?
Yes.
Not quite.
Mark and.